Evening. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I would like to invite you to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to the report by the superintendent, Dr. Henson.
Thank you. Several items for you this evening. Reminder, you probably don't need to be reminded, but the annual Foundation Breakfast is this Wednesday morning. I think we've sold out a couple of times over again, and certainly looking forward to something that'll be a surprise to everyone. We will have students involved in the program Wednesday, but we really look forward to that. It'll be, I think, our largest crowd ever at a Foundation Breakfast, and so we've had a phenomenal response certainly from our community. As you are well aware, I think Wednesday is day eighty-seven, so the eighty-seven day Listening Tour. It's really been a great experience to be out in the community buildings as well, listening and engaging individuals in relation to their dreams and vision for the school district, their assessment of where we are currently and where we want to go. We've heard from a number of people from the survey that was submitted electronically in July and August, the Listening Tour as well, and this Wednesday morning, I will be unveiling the categories of everything that we've heard, things that people really want us to address. One of the issues that I will not address Wednesday morning, because it's almost ancillary in a way, but could be really, really beneficial to the school district, is really looking at all of our district-level operations in buildings, and can we really consolidate operations into one location, not only to improve our efficiency, certainly save dollars as well, but also improve our communication. I have asked our internal architects to look at Antioch Middle School, to ask if we could really repurpose that building. That preliminary, and again, it will be preliminary information, should be in my desk sometime mid next week. And again, the purpose is to really look at, can we improve communication, but also can we be more efficient in our operations by not having so many district-level buildings that do not house kids, and consolidate that into one point. So that's a part of our overall facilities, operation, and what we're looking at. So stay tuned. Hopefully, by the next board meeting, I'll have some preliminary information to share with you in that regard. Also, I want to share with you the September twenty, that's the magic day for enrollment count here in the state of Kansas. That date has occurred. We did not see a decrease in enrollment, which is very significant for us. We do have RFPs in from a demographer. You will recall that we put an RFP out for services of a demographer to really look at a long-range facility plan for the school district. And so we're in the process of reviewing those proposals. That will be very significant for us. So the plan with a demographer is really going to look at our neighborhoods that we think will re-green when, difficult to predict, but when they might re-green, working with our local municipalities in relation to their plans, their projects that might impact student enrollment, and putting together a long-range facility plan. What we do know from our September twenty enrollment count, we have some buildings that are over capacity. We have some buildings that are significantly under capacity. So we, as a district going into this next school year, I hate to start talking about next school year already, but really, we have to put plans in place which will give us a detailed approach for many years to come in relation to enrollment in buildings. We're going to have some buildings that are going to age out. We need to start talking about that. We have other buildings that we are either going to need to have additions, or, and I really don't, I hate to even say this terminology, or look at boundaries, because we have some areas where we can't accommodate the number of students in buildings. We can't accommodate them appropriately. And so stay tuned in that regard. The demographic study will take several months to really be thorough in the process and try to predict and project what's going, what's going to take place. So the goal at the end of the demographic study, and you will receive preliminary information all along the way, is to really lead the process with a long-range plan in relation to our facilities and what we need to be doing in the future. And so it will look at every detail of what we do, even transfer requests, building capacity, buildings aging out, additions, all of those things will be a part of a master plan as we move forward. So we're thrilled with the good news from the September twenty enrollment count, and we'll certainly monitor that issue as the, as the school year proceeds. I do have a quiz for you tonight. The number of people that reside within our school district boundaries, Donna, you can't look at my notes.
I won't answer.
So, and I won't ask you for a response, but I saw this on some audit information today. According to this audit information, there are two hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred fifty individuals that live within the boundaries of the Shawnee Mission School District. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but those are some of the things that we're working on now, and certainly we will unveil additional information Wednesday morning.
Any questions for Dr. Henson? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to open forum. Addressing the Board, at the beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will not usually receive an answer, a response during the meeting. We can place time limits on this. I think I just have three speakers, so I would just ask you to be concise and don't talk for ten minutes or something like that. If, around five minutes is usually the, the open forum boundary of talking, but we will not cut you off tonight, so. And we will begin with Kirsten Bird. Kirsten Bird, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I answer to all variations on the Kirsten theme. My name is Kirsten Bird. I'm a parent of two children enrolled at Briarwood Elementary School, and I am here to urge the administration and Board to take action with regard to the surging enrollment at the school and the class sizes. I've handed out some materials in advance. The map at Tab A is something we're all familiar with. I've highlighted on there where Briarwood is. The reason I included it is I'm talking about what's happening at other elementary schools in the area around Briarwood Elementary School. Tab B demonstrates substantial, sustained, and consistent growth in the Briarwood enrollment. Dr. Henson mentioned re-greening of neighborhoods. Briarwood is very green right now. It has grown consistently since 2010, when it had five hundred eight students, then it went to five twenty-one, then five thirty-five, then five sixty-five, and now we're at five ninety. So since 2010, just a few years, the enrollment at Briarwood has jumped by eighty-two students. So that makes me ask, what's happening at the other elementary schools in the area of Briarwood, or that feed their ELL students into Briarwood? Because as you know, ELL is focused and has centers, and one of the ELL centers is Briarwood. So you turn to Tab C, and I just took the data from the school district's website, and that shows that of all of the schools that send their kids, their ELL kids to Briarwood, or that feed into East, none of them matches the growth at Briarwood. Briarwood is up eighty-two students since 2010, but scan down the list. Corinth, up three. Prairie, up nine. Brookridge, up eight. Several schools are shrinking. And even among the schools that have experienced growth, like Trailwood, which is up sixty-four, none of these schools match the growth at Briarwood. What does that equal? Huge class sizes. I have a second grader and a third grader. For the second year in a row, my third grader has twenty-eight regular students in her classroom, plus three ELL students who are integrated for the portion of the day. That is over thirty students in the classroom for math and other key time periods in the day, music, PE, art, lunch, over thirty kids. So that makes me ask, what are the rules about class sizes? Kansas doesn't have a rule. They leave it up to the school districts. So Shawnee Mission has implemented its rule. That's at Tab D. I focus on this page at grade level two through three, because that's my kids. And I see a range of seventeen to twenty-nine as a permissible range class size within the district. That's huge. It's a huge range. Well, what's really happening in the schools? Is there such a disparity in class sizes? Turn to Tab E. Even with the budget cuts experienced by the Kansas schools, the school district, to its credit, has maintained an average class size district-wide across all elementary schools of twenty-one students per class. So when I think about my kids with twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty kids in the class, it's off the charts. More information about what is happening on a school-by-school level basis is found at Tab F. It looks confusing at first glance, but bear with me. This is a district document. I pulled it off the district website. Look at the bottom portion of the document. That lays out class size distribution, 2012, 2013. Across the top, it's the number of students in each class, breaks down on the left-side column by grade level, and then in the far right, it gives the total number of classrooms in the district. So let's look at third grade, for example. There were ninety-seven third grade classrooms in the Shawnee Mission School District last year. Two of them were at twenty-seven students. Two out of ninety-seven, two percent. No, no class was at the level of my daughter's class right now, which is at twenty-eight to thirty-one, depending upon the class period of the day. And when you look at how these guidelines play out, look over towards the left. There are more total classrooms in the district that are smaller than the classroom guidelines. Twenty-four classrooms last year were smaller than the district guidelines. And then jump over to the right side. Of the elementary school classrooms at twenty-seven or above, it was only fourteen classrooms out of a total of six hundred eighty-six elementary classrooms across the district, two percent. It's an anomaly, but it's common at Briarwood. Okay, more information. Because I ask more questions. So what does it look like right now at other elementary schools feeding into East? That's shown on Tab G. Briarwood, my second-grade son has twenty-six kids in his class, plus three ELL who are integrated for forty percent of the day, over thirty, over the district guidelines. The district, for some reason, doesn't count the ELL students when they calculate the total class sizes. My daughter, twenty-eight, plus three. Look at the percent of socio-economically disadvantaged kids at Briarwood. Second-highest of those feeding into East. Look at the racial diversity, the very highest. So you have of the elementary schools feeding into East, Briarwood, an ELL center for the district, with the second-highest socio-economically disadvantaged percentage of children, and the highest rate of racial diversity, with the highest off-the-chart class sizes. If you moved to Mission Hills, I'd have eighteen in a class, or nineteen in a class. Look at Tab H. This is all of the schools that feed their ELL kids into Briarwood. They don't educate the ELL kids at their facilities. They go to Briarwood. What class sizes do they enjoy? Twenty, eighteen, fifteen at Deemer? It's not fair. And that's the reason I'm here, and I'm not before the legislature. We're talking about a disproportionately large class size at one of the poorest and most racially diverse elementary schools in the school district. This is an issue for this Board to address and this administration. The Board should not perpetuate a system where schools with a high percentage of wealthy white children enjoy manageable class sizes. But Briarwood, one of the few ELL centers with great socioeconomic and racial diversity, is off the charts. I ask this Board to take immediate action. My daughter's class is above the district guidelines. Immediate action. I've talked to Dr. Peach. He said it won't be easy, but he does have a contingency plan to add another class section. It impacts other people, but let me tell you, it impacts me every night when my daughter comes home crying because she's behind in math. When I get an email from the teacher saying, "We can't move on academically because not enough kids are keeping up." Second, long-term plans. I am encouraged when I hear Dr. Henson talk about a long-term plan to address this, but we need immediate action as well. Thank you. I'm sure I exceeded my five minutes, but I care a lot.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ferguson.
I'll be shorter to make up.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. My question is for Ms. Byfield and Dr. Henson. My name is Elizabeth Ferguson, and I have first- and third-grade sons at Briarwood. My third grader has twenty-eight in his class, plus additional ELL students for part of the day. My brother's son is in third grade at Prairie. He only has eighteen students in his class and no additional ELL students. Ten more students per class at Briarwood is unacceptable. Beyond just being too many students for the size of the room, I'm very concerned with the classroom experience for the children. Many students who don't demand much of the teacher's time are simply being overlooked. Even the best teachers don't have the time to get to know them, help them with questions or insecurities, or to truly evaluate them on a personal level. These kids don't know what a traditional class should look, feel, and sound like. I believe such crowded classrooms will have a negative effect on test scores. Again, unacceptable. There simply should not be such disparity in classroom size between Briarwood and other area elementary schools. What can you do to alleviate the stress on the students, the teachers, and the facilities to help Briarwood be more in line with other elementary schools and improve test scores? Thank you.
And our last speaker is Nancy Fritz.
School Board members, Dr. Henson, and cabinet members. Last year, the Kansas Association of School Boards, hand the Kansas School Superintendents Association, worked with members of the Kansas Legislature, to craft a bill that would severely curtail teachers' collective bargaining rights. I asked you then to show support of your teachers by standing beside us against these proposed changes. You chose to remain neutral. Now the KASB is asking its members to show their support this year when the legislature proposes to drastically shorten the list of items in the Professional Negotiations Act again, plus remove the due process law. This afternoon, I watched the KASB video, which is titled Negotiations Act and Teacher Tenure, that has been sent to its members explaining the need for support for these proposed changes to our laws. In fact, at the end of the video, Mark Tallman, KASB Associate Executive Director for Advocacy, discusses that last year legislators claimed to have only heard from teachers who were against the proposed legislation, and that school boards or superintendents did not contact legislators with their positions on the proposed legislation. Mr. Tallman further explains to viewers that this legislative session, if the changes to the laws are to be passed, then legislators have told KASB directors that they will need to get support from their members. Their members will need to be willing to speak in support of the changes in the laws at legislative hearings and in public forums. I believe that this will be the main topic at each of KASB's regional meetings, which begin tomorrow. Once again, I'm asking you to stand with your teachers concerning these legislative proposals. These laws did come about as a protection to teachers, but in many cases, they allowed for the improvement in the learning environments for their students as well. Some of you may remember the unrest of the seventies, when teachers were fighting so hard for these protections. In fact, Tallman and Angie Staubommer, the staff attorney, explained the history of the PNA and due process laws. Tallman refers back to the seventies and eighties, and that possibly boards were abusive in the past, and therefore, KNEA was able to get these laws passed. Teachers fought then for the ability to negotiate work environments that allowed for teachers to excel in their profession. When workers have input into their working conditions, data shows that there is more success for all involved. For example, Mr. Tallman talks about being able to have the ability to set the length of time that a teacher works. This would not include the number of classes a high school teacher may teach, or the minutes of planned time. As our district is forced to create larger class sizes and make other changes due to funding cuts, teachers' stress level has risen and morale has diminished. If teachers do not have the ability to negotiate the number of classes they teach, or the number of minutes in their planned time, or any of the other items in the PNA, and they view their expertise being dismissed on best practices for the learning environment, then the level of morale will diminish even more. I, for one, do not want to see our district experience that condition. Teachers are already stressed with workload issues and no increase in their base pay in four years. As you know, the attacks on teachers in our country have already caused teacher morale to suffer greatly. Standing with KASB and attacking the PNA and due process laws will not help the morale among your teachers. To support KASB's agenda or even stay neutral is not what your teachers or your community need from you. They need to be able to stand up and say, "I work for the Shawnee Mission School District. Where both administrators and teachers work together, where our contract is negotiated not only for the betterment of the teachers, but the end result is a stronger, more positive learning environment for our students." Teachers want to continue to say that they are proud to work for the Shawnee Mission School District. Once again, I'm Once again, I'm asking you to stand with your teachers. Thank you.
All righty. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September ninth.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Visville. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, seven-zero. Thank you. Move on to...
Five-zero.
Five-zero. I'm so sorry. Out of habit there. We're a little short tonight. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any Board member would like to remove from the consent agenda? Remove approval of the consent agenda. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors and Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, five-zero. Okay. With that consent agenda, we move quite a ways down the, I think, to the letter R, financial report. Dr. Henson, I don't know who is going to answer questions on that.
We would certainly entertain any questions that you might have. As you noticed, Mr. DePiero is not with us today. And so if you have questions, we'll attempt to answer those questions, but it's your monthly financial report.
Are there any questions on the, any part of the financial report submitted? Okay. Very good. We are flying along here, and we are already up to Board comments. So I will open the floor for Board comments.
Other than the fact that we have an exciting event coming up Wednesday, which we've already heard about, and it's really great to have that much interest from our community in the schools, so.
Okay.
Hope others will be able to watch it, I think, on our website. Mrs., after the fact, can they go find it?
We will tape it and broadcast it after the fact, but of course, it's a ticketed event, so we would not be streaming it directly.
Right. No, I knew it wouldn't be at the same time.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I have one. The KMEA Outstanding Middle School and High School Band Directors went to two Shawnee Mission band directors, Steve Adams and Megan Ernie, Indian Woods in Shawnee Mission South. And I spoke with both of them, and they were very excited about that, because part of that is because they are nominated by their peers. And so that's always a great tribute, I think, to them, when they are nominated and then selected by their peers. And also, you know, I don't think we can probably say this enough when we talk about Common Core. Common Core state standards has now in Kansas become career and college readiness. So if you see "career and college readiness" stated, that is the same as the Common Core, and it is not a federal program. I will just say that much, anyway. I don't think we can state that probably too many times. Any other comments? Okay, Mrs. Goodburn.
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations. The meeting will reconvene at...
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
I will, oh, a second, but can we let the students who happen to be here and need signing come up to be signed instead of waiting for...
Do we have students who need papers signed or anything?
I know we have one for certain.
Do we? Okay. Please step forward. That's fine. You guys don't have anything to get signed in the macro?
Go ahead and take the book.
Okay. You chose a quick board meeting there.
If you've got a pen, I'll use it.
All those in favor, please say aye.